Wednesday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Roll call.
Bad, you're Stuki?
Yeah.
Balajé?
Here.
Good. Should I help?
Here.
Rise for the pledge. Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To defy the United States of America in the figure republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One point three, or two, is there a motion to adopt tonight's decision?
Subtle. Second.
Roll call.
Bad, yes, Stuki?
Yes.
Balajé?
Yes.
Playhouse?
Yes.
One point three, approval of the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Is there a motion?
Subtle.
Second.
Roll call.
Bad?
Yes.
Stuki?
Yes.
Balajé?
Yes.
Playhouse?
Yes.
Two point one, Mr. Marshall.
Two point one.
Actually, I'm gonna let Heather Pinto set this one up.
Well, see, that's what I was gonna do. It's not really.
Hi, guys. This is Nate. I'm here to introduce to you a stellar student we have in our building and a teacher from our building who has helped the development of this mural come to life through the students' ideas and drawings. And that teacher is Miss Stacy Caddenall. She is a sponsor here at the Junior High, and I always have this out. It's the Junior High Minority Student Union. So she's gonna speak a little bit about the student and what the idea was behind this.
So hi, everybody. I'm Stacy Caddenall, and this is the wonderful Ellie Russell-Ding. She's seventh grader. She looks like she's about, uh, about right. This is her wonderful family right here. And I've happened to know her and watched her just change and grow, and I'll start crying if I start talking about it. But I'm gonna go ahead and kind of go through just the journey that she has taken me on, quite frankly, and kind of how it began with the Junior Minority Student Union and kind of how we got started. And I kind of did this so that I would just talk and talk and talk. So there's also pictures on it for you to see. So it was established in January of two thousand twenty-two after the Spring Grove community undivided cohort that I met some amazing, wonderful people. And there is another cohort, I believe, that had started that brought together many diverse community members of various colors in our Spring Grove area. And I was very lucky to be able to be a part of that. And one of the things was to take a mission out of that particular undivided cohort and to put it into action. And I am a person of my word. And when we met over that time period, because Bad was there, and Nina's wonderful husband, I got to know quite well, was there. And I thought to myself, I am going to take this and let it continue. Obviously, I am not a person of color, but I wanted to give the kids space to be able to feel safe and be able to speak and be able to express themselves. So I collaborated with, I don't believe it's here just yet. Olivia Darmani was a student there last year. But I actually got to meet and get to know Saiba, who is Nina's daughter, and also Abigail Tucker, who I had as a student. I had Abby. And they actually were the advisors or presidents, whatever you want to call them, of the high school. And so I spoke with them when this began to kind of get an idea of how they made their high school version work. And so they gave me all kinds of advice, how their announcements went, how different ideas of paintings they had, and how they got the kids involved at the high school. And so now Olivia Darmani is, she's a junior, I believe, at the high school. She is amazing. She was gonna try to make it. That girl is in everything. And she's probably busy doing one of her extracurriculars or something that she volunteers. So we meet once a month. We're a small group. But we're, hopefully, fingers crossed, gonna continue to grow. And we meet two-thirty and three-fifteen in my room. And let's see, I had a co-adviser who was a woman of color, and she had to, had to go a little bit of a backseat this year, because I get that question sometimes. And one of the things that I really like about the high school is you have Miss Bridget Llewellyn, and your other advisor is Miss Caddenall. And so you have a woman, a white woman, then you have her. She is their woman of color. And what's so great about it is the kids can go and feel comfortable around either one of those teachers, and it's a safe place for them to be themselves and to talk about the things that they want to talk about. So this is kind of our journey with this fabulous lady right here. So in two thousand twenty-two, Ellie began designing, and I'm gonna show you the pictures here. I said, "What do you want to do?" And I said, "The high school has posters throughout the building. And why don't we think about maybe doing something like that?" And she's like, "Well, I'll draw something." And I didn't even realize she was an artist until she started showing me on posters these little faces that she drew just by hand by pencil. And I was like, "Wow, these are really cool." So she, we ran, what would that look like? What could that look like for the junior high? And so we ran from the logo. She created the logos, the colors, the innovative vision that she felt would encompass the students here and our club. So this is the, and they're around the building, and it is still my goal to get t-shirts, many, right? And so this is the original beginning of our mural idea. And so, as you can see, this right here is Saiba and Abby. I basically took this from them because this is what they did to start theirs. This was the first meeting announcement, "All students of color are welcome to join." And that's kind of our, what we say. We also say we provide fellowship and conversation and things like that on our announcement. So this was Ellie's vision of what she thought that it would look like the Junior Minority Student Union. Do you want to explain it for me? You want me to keep going? Okay, she's nervous. She does have something that I really hope she'll say. So this was her vision of the different faces that she thought that our schools and our students look like, okay? Pretty amazing. So I was like, "Oh, my gosh, she's gonna draw." And it didn't take her that long to do it. And Miss Gant is our art teacher. She was really kind of helping her out too with her artistic ability. So I want to kind of give a shout out to her. So then the mural vision from start to finish, it began in November and it finished three months later. So it was early in March. And somebody asked, "Oh, she did this during the day now." We stayed after school, two to three days a week, sometimes for over an hour each day. And we got to know each other quite well. She also had friends. Even her grandmas came and assisted with the process. They hung out with her after school. The rule was there was a ladder, and she was not allowed to be on the top part of that ladder. She's created because she told her, she even told her mom that, "I'm not supposed to be on that ladder. Mrs. Caddenall's not there." Because I didn't want her to fall. So I always had my feet where I would be right there with her. And so we talked about, you know, how her day was going and what was going on. And she used that platform like Saiba and Abby would use with their teachers to talk about her day, what she saw, and how she felt. She confided in me in different things that were bothering her about maybe friend problems or what she saw. And so it was really cool to hear that. And I got to go over to the high school last year and hear your beautiful daughter share the different things, Nina, that she shared in her, in that meeting. So we handed supplies. We got her to, we got her the items that she needed. So what began as basically this thirteen-year-old girl, small pencil-drawn picture, grew into a hand-sketched, hand-painted, wall-sized mural of love and acceptance for all. And I guess that's really what I hope, that my school building, who would really hope that they would understand, that she put her ideas and words, she put them into art. And it was something that she, it's all her. I had nothing to do with it. I was just there to love and accept her. And I, it was just amazing to watch her change into the strong, young figure that she is. And it was all her. I just supported her. And all the other kids that represent who she is, her face. So this was the beginning. This was what she drew on a small piece of paper, eight and a half by eleven. She came and I said, "Let's do it. You want to do a mural?" She said, "Can I do a mural?" I said, "Absolutely. You want to do a mural? Sure." I said, "I don't know where we're gonna put it, but, so, sure, let's do a mural." And so we went to, obviously, administration, I'm always gonna ask the administration first. So we went to the principal and asked, and she was like, "Yeah, let's go find an area where we can put it." And so, so that, you know, comments, that's where everybody is, we put it there. And this is where it began. So she drew that on a small piece of paper. And this was, and I'll let her hopefully read what she, why she put it as a puzzle. And she'll explain to you, and it's all her words, why she made it a puzzle. And so that was a small, like I said, eight and a half by eleven paper. So then this young lady goes, again, all her. So this is it here. And off to the right, a part of the mural is our wonderful custodian, Dave, who is still on the mural. And he actually, we kept him as a part of it because I adored Dave. He was wonderful to my son, who was here as an eighth grader. And Dave is actually looking, because we talked about it. Dave is actually looking on, because Dave loved the kids, and he adored the kids. And so Dave is actually looking at her mural, because I've never covered that up. And so he's actually looking as a part of, because we talked about that. And he is a part of, like, he was a part of our kids. So this is, she hand-drew, okay? She took, you can see her sketch marks. So she took that small piece of paper, and that's how she began. And these are just a few. I told her, I said, "I wish," because she, I didn't even know she was doing this. She said, "Do you know what, Dad, I took a picture?" And I was like, because I had other meetings. So if she would have a friend out there with her or whatever, she, you can see, we tried to cover up a little more. But that, you can see her pencil marks. You can see it kind of coming together. And it was funny, because when the janitor said, "You better finish up. You haven't filled these in." Well, those are, you can tell, are the puzzle pieces. It's meant to be that way, so that you can put that there. My favorite part, what, what part I love the most? The eyes, yeah. And then that is, it's too good to see it live if you've got to see it in person. But that is, originally, we had green, and then she changed it to blue. But, and then that is, it's huge. And it is supposed to be an uplifting, positive representation of what our kids, all the different kids that we have in this district and in this building. And I am so proud of her. And she said she's gonna read the card when we go out there, because that's what she did when she revealed it. She didn't want, she's so humbled. And I said, "You wanna, how do you want to?" We had to ask her. She said, "I don't want us to show it to everybody." I said, "Well, do you want to show it to your team of students?" She's like, "Yeah, I'll do that." So she showed it to Team Powerful. We had a short reveal. And she showed it to her students on her team and her teachers. And Mrs. Hester came over, and of course, Mr. Marshall came over. And she revealed it there. But the intense details for a thirteen-year-old, and again, all her, not me. I just loved her and supported her and want, and the kids have been great. And at the end, one of our special needs aides came up to me that is down in Strikeburg Room, and she said, "This represents all of our kids in my classroom." And I thought that was amazing to hear this sweet lady say that. And it does. That's what it's supposed to be. And I just want every, we want everybody, every student in this building, no matter what color, what religion, whatever you are, that this is an inviting building in the district. And I think this is just, that's why I wanted, you know, the people that I invited, that we invited, to come and see what amazing this is for Spring Grove. Before we go and do the reveal, any questions from the education?
I just have a question. Like, we saw your eight and a half by eleven. Did you like, how did you get it up on the wall? Did you do like a projector and trace what you did on paper?
That was a suggestion, but I just measured out, like, I scaled it and measured it, and then drew the lines of the face and then moved my back to the piece.
That's amazing. That is amazing. I just think it really shows, I think, a lot of us, most of us in this room, look the same. And I think to look through their eyes for the kids and adults in our district that don't look like the rest of us, I just think that's, when I first saw that, that's what it represented to me, is this is what, through her eyes. Because it's not always easy not looking like the rest of what a majority of Spring Grove looks like. So I just felt like your heart came through your drawing, and you're an amazing artist, amazing. But I think more than that was even just seeing your heart and what you processed through as you have been a student in Spring Grove School. So thank you for sharing that with us. This is beautiful.
And Mrs. Bad gave two, sorry. She gave one more, too. Yeah. All right, shall we take a field trip and go see it?
Education Association, do you want?
Yeah.
Yes, that's good. And the classified?
All right.
All right. Any prearranged? I don't think so. Is there any public participation on an agenda item? All right, move on to the workstation and, and Matt, I guess you go first.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Here for you to talk about a new position that we want to act about. If you guys are aware, Mrs. Hester's a little bit of a vacation. And it's one of the supervisory director of curriculum. This position that we are proposing would be a future special assignment that we're gonna have to do a lot of the work that Liz has done in the past, from a teacher perspective. As Mrs. Hester says, and before she says, future real people want to help. This is a coaching role. We really want to make sure that we get our person to it. Our position is internal first, that all of the current teachers that we have on the desk, that I don't believe we need to look outside of the district for this. We think we have some very bold features that are experts in nursing that can help grow that throughout our mission.
Any questions?
I love it that you think we have some possibilities here, because I always would hope that we're promoting our people when it's the right fit. So I love that opportunity, and I agree, teachers learn best from teachers. But it's a great, great decision. So I do have one quick question. Does that start next year? So they would finish off their year this year?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Three point four O T C R O State trip. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Stuki, members of the board. I have for you a ROTC leadership and academic bull team trip request for June twenty-third through twenty-seventh for cadets and Colonel Barry. They will be traveling to Washington, D.C., and they will be staying at the Catholic University of America in dorms. Their lodging and meals and transportation will all be covered by the J-Roxey organization, so does no cost to the district.
Questions?
Is that something we've done before? I feel like I've seen that.
Yes, we did it in two thousand nineteen, and I think they scored thirteen out of sixteen.
Yeah, that's awesome.
They do a great job.
And they represented very well in the Spring Expo for many hours.
They sure did.
Yeah, really, because we have some quality cadets.
For a long time, and good.
Yeah.
All right, the second request is for the classic student tours, eighth grade trip to Washington, D.C. That will be from October twenty-fourth to October twenty-seventh. This is our annual trip to Gettysburg and Washington, D.C. There is one change besides the cost, and that is the pizza party and dance that is typically held in the hotel will now be held on a boat. So they will be doing a dinner cruise with a dance along the coast. So that's a little bit of a switch for the trip. So we are looking at approximately one thousand eighteen dollars for an extra seven.
Is there any break for, like, students who qualify for free reviews? Or do we have any, what do we do to help?
We do scholarships for students who have financial need.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert?
Members for President, members of the board, bringing to you this evening a recommendation to increase our lunch prices for the twenty-three to twenty-four school year. I learned a long time ago to bring experts with me, and so I have Ms. Kathy Por here with us. And so Kathy's gonna describe to you why this is important for the district and for food service.
Yeah, we did talk about it briefly. Certainly, it is always the board's decision to raise prices or to not raise prices. We do, and we now have a positive balance in our food service funds. We are not required to raise our lunch price. I will tell you that as part of the application process, Victory Port will be currently charging to a B E as we apply for the National Food Program. And the comment last summer to me was, "The lunch prices are way too low. Consider raising them," and I said, "We are not." Because we're coming back from the pandemic, from lunch being free, to now we have to charge. And just getting that brought out, it's, you know, it's probably November before everybody caught on. It's not free for everybody anymore. So that was a huge change, and it's still a struggle for some of our families. And there is a price tool calculator formula that we use. So I did, I went ahead and did it in case we were, you know, in that unfortunate position where you had to raise prices. So our weighted average lunch prices this year should have been due two dollars and seventy-five cents. And so we're well done that. I know Mr. Gilbert shared with you some local districts that surround us. I mean, we are one of the lowest as far as food use percentage, certainly one of the lowest lunch prices. This year is, like, last year is a challenge for supplies. I think it's been more supplies than food. We are starting to see some more food outages. But Trucker's office gets targeted, I swear, by the local lady on food. So she increased my budget this year, and will probably spend less than every penny of that, you know, two million dollar budget. I would say overall, food prices are probably up to twenty percent. Some more prices, like our bakery, went up to one hundred and twenty five cents over last year. So it's a real struggle. And there's, you know, there's one bakery that serves Spring Grove. There's one dairy that serves Spring Grove. Several dairies have all made a bunch, which really won two dairies right now that package the ham pints that we eat. So, you know, ever changing. So that's the biggest takeaway for me, is that we see, you know, prices going up. Obviously, labor's going to increase, and I'm grateful for the increase we're getting toward headbooks and to our staff, which are very undervalued. So I just wanted to give you some of the reasons behind why I think we may need to start to try to catch up again to where we should be. I did see one of the schools was considering like a fifty cent increase. And really, the state doesn't really favor that. They normally will say, like, if we're fifteen cents under, they want you to go ten cents and carry the five cents over to, I mean, nobody wants to be hit with, you know, this huge price increase. And I think the money that we had donated that we are using for those reduced families, I think that's super important. And those people have expressed gratitude for that. I know the S T A C has seen an increase once food stamps were cut in March. I mean, food costs didn't get cheaper at the grocery store, just the money was cut. So they're seeing a big influx over at the S T A C as well. And I just sent another family out, but I didn't even know they existed, that needed help with that. So I think it's really important that we focus more on those. And the idea behind that price tool is that you're not subsidizing your paid lunch price with every portion you get for reduced prices. And the other tidbit is, this year, they gave us forty cents more across the board for everything. And that expires June thirtieth. We're trying, you know, school leadership association, all the groups that I belong to. We're encouraging the senators and the congressmen to make that agreement, whether or not that will pass, I won't know until, until July. So that's it in a nutshell, as kind of where we're at. And then certainly, the board can ascertain whether they want to increase this year or keep it the same, so.
That's interesting. Which there's not, even with the time, with the dying increase, we're still not high.
No, we're not. I mean, nobody wants to be the top. Nobody wants to be the bottom. I don't want to be in the middle. So, you know, yeah, we've been very fortunate. I mean, when I came here, we had a positive balance. You know, we're sitting on one point eight million dollars. And there's some in this district here, and now have more than that, some have less. And some are, you know, on C P, so they're not trying much to install. So the, you know, it's the same couple of gateways that we choose. So, you know, with a very low free use, we try to focus on those things and help as much as we can, so.
I have one for a treasurer that stole you from London. And they, what did they serve in state for four fifteen as marching?
Yeah, you see a lot of those lunch prices. A lot of those school districts will have two or three-tiered white students. You know, because the students want either a larger portion or a more expensive item. So they offer that to them. And that would work well here as well, because you have a low free use. Because if you're offering four dollar lunch and not on free lunch, you still get to get in that line. People don't, some types of free lunch students don't realize that, like, lunch is free, no matter what. What you're, you earn eight dollars, doesn't matter. It's sort of a free, so they have to be able to cover that. And that's why you see that for, that's getting up there.
So would the cost for the reduced also go up a little, or does our?
That's mandated by USDA. And then typically is that, is the reason that the students were charged forty cents is because the reimbursement between what a free lunch and a reduced lunch is that forty cents. So the student is paying that. We voted, and I'm so grateful that you did that, starting in January, we haven't been charging that. And I have had, you know, about a hundred students and my families calling me, asking me to explain why. And when we did, it was, you know, it's very black and white. This is, this is threshold, and they might be over it by five dollars a month, and they're still gonna be reduced, and that's a struggle. You know, we just did direct certification last Friday, the Friday before. I think it's a lot of families that are on SNAP benefits. So part of that letter that I sent out to those, you know, who haven't been to school yet, we can weigh the school fees, just have to tell me that you want that information shared. So I had an air con stay. I was grateful that, she's like, I didn't know. She didn't understand the letter and what the benefits were for her children. So even though she's a kindergarten, she just thought, "Well, they don't eat, so it doesn't matter." But it matters for her to be bigger. So, you know, it's hard to get that word out, but just some of the words you consider.
Appreciate it. Just make it.
Thank you, man.
Thanks, Kathy.
Committee reports. Do we have it? Discussion of any other business? Approval?
Do you want to tell us the winners now, or?
Oh, it's, I thought. No, I agree.
So Nina will share with us that the Pink Hawk Organization has sponsored the street month essays that we had a lot of entries and watched all of the videos, which they are amazing. It was so fun to watch first graders speaking to a kid. But they did great. And so Lena is going to let us everyone have a pretty trouble. All right, just keep a hold of it up. This is our third year of doing this contest. And the first year, I think we had a lot of, um, people that entered just because it was something new and just, um, I think the environment of what everything felt, we're kind of all through as a nation. Um, with COVID and with the passing of George Floyd. But this year, the quality of the speeches was just wow, just amazing. And I just really wanted to share, you know, about that. I'm just so impressed with the presentation skills and it's neat to see, um, like younger siblings apply this year whose brother may have applied. So it's just so neat to be able to see that and then to be able to see the growth, um, in the children from year to year. So it's almost like they're my kids' money. Um, but so that was really great to see. But these, the younger students, they wrote on famous, um, black people in American history. And then the older grades from six to 12, they have three different prompts that they, that they got to select from. And everybody tied it back personally to that. The students were brave, they were vulnerable, they shared, they gave their own experiences. So I just really, really want to commend everyone who's given time and energy to do it, to the teachers who encouraged and of course to the parents. Um, and I do want to share who the winners were. Um, again, I apologize, I just lost it. We broke the, the, the grades down into different bands. And in the kindergarten through second grade, um, first place was Nora Nanny. Second place was Abby Burke and third place was Robert Buckmacher. In grades three through five, and that was our biggest, our biggest category that we had the most entrance. Um, number one was Andrew Ortell, first place I should say is Andrew Ortell. And then tied for second were, um, Additison and Rosie Fisher. In the grades, um, six through eighth, which I really had a hard time believing that they were sixth and eighth graders that were doing it. They really speak better than I do. Um, sixth grade through eighth, we have, um, first place goes to, they were Eback. Second place goes to Sanjat Kapasalam and third place goes to Nava Artis. And then in the ninth through 12th grade category, first place goes to Valentina Ruzal and second place went to Hannah Shilling. So again, I just wanted to thank, um, the board for giving us this opportunity, um, just for us to create lead leaders and speakers and it was just wonderful. So, um, the award checks have been requested through the Warren County Foundation. And so I will be reaching out, um, just for privacy and want to get that information. I'll just be passing it through the secretary, the school building secretary to the students. So I just wanted to say thank you very much again. Thank you.
The students go first?
Yes.
Okay. You want to test the parent?
Yes. The students never. We didn't tell them until like, like we didn't tell them until after, like they had to watch the award show. Because like, that's how like the Oscars and stuff works, so.
Well, I think, I think, I think my daughter, Sarah, dropped the news at first place, I guess we were, we may have, because she wasn't at the awards ceremony. And, um, when she, you know, charmed something, you know, congratulated, she didn't work. She's like, what?
Yes, and she, and she emailed me, she's like, I heard, I want, did I really? So, yeah.
I just think it's neat to see where in the three years, how there is more awareness of it and the quality of what you're seeing. I just think it's great to have another opportunity in our schools to help kids think outside of the box a little bit. Um, and learn how to use a rubric as to, you know, how maybe we evaluate all the other things.
So. Using a rubric, um, the speaking, the, you know, the speaking skills and all of that. So, you know, I'm sorry to take up time, but just quickly, I had one student, I, they, he re-recorded because it wasn't very clear. And the second one that he did was so much better, you know? So it's just like, like in next year's, you know, we're going to put kind of notes like presentation matters, you know? Because this is, it's, it's a, um, an oral contest. I mean, you know, we're, we're bringing on that as well too, so.
And I know in the, in the awards, it was neat to that student, he is a white boy, but he shared how the, the person that he did his research on, but he related it to I've been bullied. And I can only imagine that the people of color, when they're in a white community, a white school, whatever, what that must have felt like. So to see those connections at a fifth grade, fourth grade, I don't remember what level it is, fourth or fifth grade level, that's amazing.
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that just, I think is amazing. So it's helping our kids think outside of the box, right, of the world that they're usually in.
Yeah.
It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurers report.
Okay, several items for you tonight. Um, item 4.1 is the people for the financials for February. Um, they came in at, our revenues came in at just over 13.7 million for the month. Um, most of that, 12.3 of that, mainly was for tax advantage. This is the time of year where we're getting lots of tax advantages. Um, 1.2 million is state funding, 174,000 is facility use revenue. Um, part of that was our excess cost reimbursement and some investment interest that we get, school fees and paper spickies that are still rolling in. Um, our cash flows right now through February were about $13,000 off customers, what I expect to be this time of year. So we're very close on revenue. I am watching, um, waiting for our settlement to come in from Warren County to see if we had a new prior year delivery fee to pay that may give us additional revenue this year. Um, what do we see because we don't get that until the end of the month, our early expenses won't get to us. Um, our expenses came in at just over hopefully $9 million for February. Um, purchase services has, um, came back into line where we were expending more than we were putting on there during September. We talked about that in the primary session, that's what that was. Um, so we're running right about $25,000 with an estimate of a $60 million budget, so we're doing really good. Um, Scott, I'll give him kudos every time I can, but he's been doing wonderful on reclaiming for the high school water damage. Um, really staying after, um, giving insurance company everything they need to be able to pay for those reimbursements. Um, because we're spending a lot of that money out and then have to get that money back, so he's doing really great about that. Um, my closed February is under 16 million cash, which is about 100 days of operating cash on hand. And I'm still as of right now anticipating us to be at about 14 million, just under 14 million or 85 days of cash on hand when we close this year. So we're looking really good right now, right on par. So that, and then we have the financials, if you have any questions, let us just let me know. And then item 4.2 is our appropriation amendment every year this time. Every new appropriation amendment will require file one, this amendment during the year. Um, so I, it's pretty much the same as it was, um, in September, there's not a whole lot of movement, but as some of our cash funds receive more cash, I'm able to up the appropriations. Um, so that they can spend that cash if they choose. Um, so this is an amendment on that, that has, that'll go to the granddaughter. And then we need to go on this to separately.
Okay, is there a motion to accept 4.1, 4.2?
Sub moved.
Any discussion? Roll call?
That?
Yes.
Stukey?
Abstain?
Palaj?
Yes.
Playka?
Yes.
4.4?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a second. All right, I am very excited to be bringing you a recommendation for a junior in the strange contract for Destiny Sims to be our assistant treasurer effective August 1st. Just a little bit about Destiny, um, I did put this in my board update for anyone else who might not know. She is a 2019 graduate of Miami University. Um, she majored in finance. Um, and she had completed her 300 hour internship under me in 2018 to obtain her treasurer's license, which I thought was amazing. Because she was still in college and wanted to be a school treasurer in college. So that's very amazing because that doesn't happen too often where people seek out that as a career path. So I, so once she was finished with her graduation, once she graduated from Miami University in 2012, she did go ahead and file her treasurer's license. And she has been at Toon Valley Local Schools, um, since 2019 as their assistant treasurer, so I'm excited to bring that to you tonight. Um, and then I also have a few other items for you, you know, you could bring this all together. Um, approval of the amounts of rates as determined by the budget commission. These are also required to be done every single year. Um, they are authorizing the necessary tax levies and certified them for county auditor and they're due to county auditor by April 1st of each year. And then have some donations for it. Approval of a donation of two Amazon gift cards totaling $150 to the technology department for participating in interviews for Missella and double check research. Item 4.7 is an approval of a donation of $5,000 to the Shapiro Memorial Scholarship Fund from Cheryl Peter Priest. I'm trying to say that right, I'm doing it every time. Item 4.8, approval of donation of a $200 gift card from Miami Freight, purchase location of life skills materials to be used in Christie Stacey's classroom.
All right, is there a motion to accept 4.4 to 4.8?
Sub moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
That?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Mr. President, members of the board, I implore you with seeking approval for the personnel report. A couple things to point out on there. Um, my adult son, she's actually going to be a teacher for next year, so we're getting the high end season. I know I've been able to, uh, through fair, shop fair, the last couple weeks, but I'm coming next week and this question has been a heavy one. Um, we're hot, heavy enough, we decided to secure her as a high school P and health teacher. Um, additionally, we are asking for, um, approval of the military support, as you know, that's going to be a high, it's on the deep access. And I really have to kudos to Mr. Pento, Mr. Berger, Mr. Latt, um, Mr. Myers for continuing to do the job that they were hired to do and taking on this additional task of making sure that our students are safe for a G. Additionally, item 5.2, as we have a board session, we're seeking approval to add an elementary, we're seeking.
Need a motion to approve 5.1, 5.2?
Sub moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
That?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Playka?
Yes.
All right, and then finally, uh, 5.4, approval of the athletic, um, support, which is, um, if this year is a possible.
Is there a motion to approve 5.4?
In it.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
That?
Yes.
Stukey?
Abstain?
Palaj?
Yes.
Playka?
Yes.
Assistant student.
All right, and Mr. Stukey, that was the board. I have for you, um, uh, seeking approval of the Jay Ratsia of State for Washington DC as well as 2023 fall trip to Washington DC and yes, work for our eight group service.
Could I motion to accept 6.1 and 6.2? Sub moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
That?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Playka?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert. Members of the board, the members of the board, we're bringing before you, assuming, uh, to approve the new lunch prices for the 2023 school year.
There's a one on there. Okay. Is there a motion to accept 7.1?
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Just, just, I'm going to do, I just wanted to thank you for this and being in the work that you did with comparing other districts. This just helps and sometimes we do need price increases and this just really helps us see the big picture. So thank you for the person who was responsible for it, but thank you.
Okay. Roll call?
That?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Playka?
Yes.
8.1, sir.
Mr. President, members of the board, the contract on there is for, um, it's an addition to the Hamilton County ESC contract for our collaborative coaching, our behavior coach. It is, um, just three additional days for her in April to kind of catch up on the typical spring work for all increase that we see. And then she'll go back after.
All right, is there a motion to accept 8.1?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
That?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Playka?
Yes.
Uh, any announcements or future? Consider. Okay. More comments, Sarah?
Yeah. I just want to say like, I feel like there's been a lot of great things for our kids. I think they're watching the sports, um, love the funeral, love the prayers, you know, getting hired and all that. Love that's there. Loved watching them, really loved it. Like, well, I loved, loved it. Um, they did such a great job. So congratulations to all of those, it was amazing work. Um, also too, I definitely checked out, um, earlier this month, the scriptal vibes, um, they showed us stage internship. They had a couple, um, we have four or five teams competing at that level. And we also had younger elementary students, like they, I love that too, just they were able to tell me how they built their robots and how they solved the energy problem and what type of things they had to do. Um, and their parents were so proud of you, were just, you know, a lot of work and all to, um, for those teams that are in the career, they're those awesome teams. So it was hard to be able to interact and see some of the businesses that we have and I think that's breaking the bar.
Couple of were the same. Um, I just want to thank the district, the junior high specifically, for their opportunity for Ellie and to embrace what she's passionate about. I just think that this is one of the things that we've done really, really well in having an awareness of this within our, within our building. So, um, and you could, I think even from when she presented it before to tonight, there's more confidence growing as she's talking about it. So I just am thrilled with that opportunity. Um, another thing that I noticed about Career Day, uh, on Monday, I love, in the past, we've had, like, if you go to college, these are the different professions you might, you might have available. And that's wonderful and many students in Springbrot do that. But there is another full track that if they might not, that might not be the right fit. And I love the focus this year of working with the highly needs jobs and things that are available to students when they graduate from high school, if that's what they would like. So I just think that the variety that was there was absolutely awesome. I mean, some of them had, like, right there, you would make this much per hour and this, you have, you could do a career in this. This isn't just a six month thing. So, thank you, I know Andrea, you were part of that and the, um, Bethul Tree and who else was the other?
Tammy Zimmer and Bethul Tree. They deserve all the credit.
They, they just did an amazing job. And I heard also from, as we were going around talking to different organizations, it was so positive how well run it was and um, just how we're, um, having, what have you guys did with the stamps with the students? It really motivated them to get to the different, to the different stations and stuff. So, um, it was great, it was great. So thank you for that. And I feel like I've been remiss in my, my role as a career center board member, so I'm going to do better with that. So we're, I'm going to be bringing little summaries and I always like to point out when our Springbrot students are, are recognized and we had some recognitions this time. So the Skills USA state level qualifier, um, Tatiana Polke, um, was under criminal justice. Um, BPA national level qualifiers, they're going to Empire California. We had Ava Hoffman, Dylan Renwick, Reagan Blunt, Chelsea Skyski and Dre Green. So this is a lot that are competing at the state level for this, uh, or the national level. And Alexa Matthews, I know, um, Scott did a story on all of, um, the, the journey with epilepsy. And they also went to DC as an advocate for epilepsy. So I just think, you know, there's, there's so many good things available to our students. And also at the Career Center, they're shining and I love it when we do our student, um, report up at the end of our board meeting and hearing Springbrot names like Tatiana, I remember what you have adopted and brought to America. So to see that and see her in front of this police car, I'm just like, this is beautiful what she's doing. So, um, and many, many students, but I'm going to try to do better with bringing some things from the Career Center, just little summaries that we go through at our board meetings. So that's it.
I'm glad to hear that Career Day was a success. Ironically, my career got in the way of, uh, participating this year rather than the past. So I, uh, I'm glad to hear that went well and extend the thanks to, uh, it was a great event to, which was possible to put it on. But yeah, just building on what others have said, I really enjoyed the, the old presentation and just hearing the story about all being together and the, the planning and the meeting behind it. And just appreciate, um, you know, our staff, their willingness to support our students in that way and the ability to encourage them. Um, it was great to see the product and just really appreciative of, of that presentation. And, uh, great to hear also about the, the essay contest winners. And so, um, thank you for, for sharing those and for sponsoring that. And yeah, thank you to all of the, every meeting.